Alright folks, we will at this point call the special town meeting to order. I appreciate the crowd that showed up tonight, this is great, I wish this would happen all the time. We spent a lot more money and discussed a lot of other things and we have like three people here, so this is great. Alright, there's several items on the agenda, I'm sure most of you are here for the last item on the agenda, not that any of the other ones are any more important or less important, but hopefully we get to you guys quickly. Our first order of business is to elect a moderator. Do I have a nomination?
Nominate Lynn Pinder.
Second.
I have a nomination for Lynn Pinder in a second. We already had one, no more. Any other nominations?
Motion to close.
Motion to close nominations, do I have a second on that? All in favor of closing nominations?
None.
None? Do I have a motion in a second? Lynn Pinder is the moderator. Life is great, I'm glad we spent a lot of money on it. All in favor?
Close.
None. Abstention done, motion carries. Congratulations Lynn.
Should we give it somewhere?
Yeah.
Alright. I'm going to invite the town through to read the call of the meeting. Okay, resolved to approve purchase and sale agreement of 11 killing worth turnpike, aka 27 killing worth turnpike, map 43, block 45, lot 73 to Milpon LLC for $2,800,000. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
High five.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I'm gonna invite Willie, Fritz to come on up.
I don't think I need a microphone, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here to present on the behalf of the committee...
Can't hear you!
You can't hear me? Really? Alright, I'm here to present on the behalf of the committee that chose Milpon LLC, Clinton LLC as the preferred developer for this site and has put forward the purchase and sale agreement that has been approved by the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance which brings us to this event tonight. The committee was formed at the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission through our consultant, CME, our planning consultant, and it was formed on July 17th of 2013. We issued an RFQ, which was developed with our planning consultant, our planning committee, and the interchange development committee, which was comprised of the chairman of the Board of Planning and Zoning Commission, the vice chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the chairman of the Board of Finance, two other finance board members, one of which is a real estate person. It was also comprised of the chairman of the zoning board of appeals, who was a local developer, the chairman of the inland wetlands commission. It had two Board of Selectment representatives on it, myself being one of them, and another who was also a local developer. It had a representative for the Economic Development Commission. This commission began, committee began, as I said, in July of 2013 through our planning consultant and the work that the planning committee had done at meetings at the library, at town hall, etc., as to what the potential uses of this property could be and what the town envisioned this could be. We came up with an RFQ, RFP. I've heard that it never went out to bid. Well, in fact, an RFQ, RFP, Request for Qualifications, Request for Proposals, is a bid. The initial one went out in August of 2013, legal notice in the Hartford Current, the New Haven Register. It was also put on the New England Journal, excuse me, the New England Journal of Retail Developers website. It was also emailed blasted out to 150 potential developers on the, can't read my handwriting, it'd be more controllable, International Council of Shopping Centers in the Northeast. There was a response date of September 30th of 2013. Based on that, RFQ, RFP, which is a bid, we had one response. The decision was made to revise the RFQ, RFP, because we had strictly, we pretty much had focused on the hotel aspect, the commercial retail aspect, and some mixed use. We actually talked about talking to realtors as well, which we'll get to later when Owen comes up and speaks. We reissued another RFQ, RFP in October of 2013 with a response date of January 14th of 2014. We had two more responses. Based on that, the committee interviewed the three respondents. After we interviewed, saw their concepts, what they thought about the property, the committee issued in April of 2014 a letter asking them to revise their proposal based on head residential, reducing the residential at some point, urban center, town village type of design, something out of the box that's gonna keep people in town, they're not gonna be a bump and run, get off the highway, go shop. The idea was to complement the property across the street, which is the Clinton Crossing, our largest taxpayer, have something that's sustainable, people are there, they're gonna support it, living in town, supporting the town's local economy. So two of those people responded. We interviewed them both. We, at that point, select, asked for, what are you gonna offer? How much you want for the property? Everybody knows it was a price of $5 million with the building down. Everybody knows the building's useless. There's 38 acres, there's 38 acres, 12 to 15 of them are only, are developable. Building is useless to a developer. Otherwise we'd have people knocking down the building. Both of them came in with offers of less than $2.5 million. We have a planning committee meet, group that meets on every other Thursday, includes our top planning consultant, our CEO, myself, the health director, the building official. We brought each of those in, each to the other, to and again, to talk about their numbers, why they came up with their numbers. And we went back to the interchange development committee and our planning consultant recommended Milpon, Milpon Clinton LLC as a preferred developer, based on their credibility, their concept, their willingness to work with the town to develop the regs that needed to be developed to build on this site. Cooperation was the key. Their offer at that point was still 2.5. Committee authorized the Board of Selectment in August, recommended to the Board of Selectment in August to go forward with Milpon LLC, which then the Board of Selectment authorized me to use shipment and goodwin as an attorney to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement with Milpon LLC, Clinton. Their initial offer was 2.5, we asked for 3, reminding you that the initial, estimated the cost to take that building down from Wilbain in 2010 was between 2 and 3 million. We received some correspondence from them on Monday, based on today's market, that could actually exceed 3.5 to 4 million dollars, okay? So there's the costs associated with taking the building down. Sure, we can sell the property for 5 million, if we spent 3 to take the building down, we can sell it for 5. Great, what does that get us? Based on that, the Board of Selectment authorized me to go forward, we got a purchase and sale agreement, went to the Board of Selectment in January, Board of Finance in January, and that's where we are today. In, in August of 2000, no, September of 2014, went to planning and zoning, a unanimous vote was taken by the zoning commission to approve the sale of the property at an 8-24. Some of the people here in the room that now oppose the sale of the property voted to sell the property at that meeting. So, we need to make that clear. Now I'd like to ask Mark Bridges, who's on the committee, to come up and speak, and Owen Nile, please come up and speak regarding this. I'm done at this point. Mark?
As Willie said, I joined the committee in the light of part 2013.
Thank you!
That's what it's for! Thank you, thank you very much. Boy, that's Irish there.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I joined the committee at the end of 2013. We had one applicant, one party at the time. I solicited a gentleman I know in Hartford, is a developer, to come down and make a proposal to us. He did, as well as the Milpon, as well. Now, we solicited many developers, we got three interested, one dropped out, two left. At no time did any of these gentlemen talk about spending more than 2.5 million dollars. So, we could argue about all night long, what's the value? The value is what someone's willing to offer. And unfortunately, that's where we are tonight. But more importantly, I think we should look at the long view, not the short view. The short view is how much can we get for today? We have to look at what the tax dollars are gonna be down the road. We're estimating, of course, we don't see the buildings up yet, but we're estimating between 400 to 500,000 dollars a year in property tax income for the town. That's the key, excuse me, that's the key figure that we should focus on. What are we going to, as a town, receive in tax dollars going forward? And we're only gonna increase, the values generally increase of property values as we go forward, five, 10 years down. So I think that is what we should focus on as a group tonight, not what the price we're paying for this property right now. Thank you.
I know a lot of you, as myself included, have looked at that property and said, boy, it doesn't get a sweeter, to be a sweeter spot, location, location, location. It is not what it appears. The property has a very odd shape. It's got, plus a river running around it, it has this, the big thing, is a 1961 building of brick, it's 160,000 square feet, that is filled with all the things that we didn't know about, might be bad for us in the 60s in terms of building materials, and a lot of unknowns. Remediation issues, costs that are a big question mark. And it's, you cannot look at that building as an asset, it's, it's actually negative.
If you come far...
It's a negative.
Move over, move away from this lady.
There?
Yeah. Hide that now, we're almost in the 19th century.
But the loudest, the biggest point is, if it was so desirable, if it was such a great place, why in 14 months, no one in the country wanted to buy it? We had not put out a number that we wanted, we had put, we had put out... We're gonna sell this whole high school. So...
And here you go, here you go.
It's like a dollar bill.
I don't know what to do, I'll hold it like this and I'll just, I don't have much more to say. But if you have a house, that you think is a great house, and you think it's worth X, and nobody buys it, it's not worth X. If you advertised it everywhere and had a million open houses, we had signs in front of the high school, but the work, the work that went into this by a bunch of very, very qualified people, every other week for over a year, with help from other quality people, just speaks for itself. I mean, at some point you have to trust that certain people made decisions based on information that was quality information, and that we're doing the right thing. I'm sorry that there's such a sense of mistrust about this process, there was nothing other than hard work and analysis in the past 13 months to make this the best for the town, and make it something the town could be proud of, and get a cash flow. I don't want any more taxes on my, my real estate, my private property, none of you do. We need commercial development. We've lost it all.
People made the right decision, so we should be transparent.
Mr. Rensselaer?
Happy days, Mike. $49.99, rate your check, cordless bike, better than the town hall.
Willie, Willie, do the little stage calls.
Yeah, I'll put them on station. I don't wanna, I don't wanna tax this guy, his wife's here, he's got a sling on, I already hit him in the back of the shoulder.
My name is Henry Rensselaer, I'm a pot miller.
Can't hear you!
Yeah, hear you, both are.
I'm just letting them finish, so.
What you're seeing in front of you is what was presented to the committee.
Can't hear you!
What you're, what you're seeing, what you're seeing in front of you is what was presented, the committee, is not the final site plan.
Do you start again, please?
Sure.
Get behind you.
What you're seeing in front of you is what was presented to the committee.
Not everyone, this site plan...
When these were formed, the regulations were not finished. So this is a concept plan, but it's pretty close, but we hope to submit to planning and zoning. I'll start, I'm sorry, I'll start over. My name is Henry Rensselaer, I'm a real estate developer, I live in Essex, Connecticut. I've been a developer for the last 40 years, I do most of my work in southern New England, and a great deal in the Washington DC area. I know this property very well, and the market very well. What's very important for people to appreciate is that this is a 38 acre parcel, of which 13 acres is wetlands and cannot be used. That means a potential of 25 developable acres. However, under the new interchange regulations, which requires a great deal of open space and performance standards, the reality is there's about 12 to 15 acres you can actually build on. So when you're looking at this as a purchaser in the development world, what you're buying is 12 to 15 acres. You're not buying 38 because you can't use them. Secondly, I'd like to point out that we have to go through all of the town committees. We have to start with the inland wetlands commission, we have to go to planning and zoning, we have to go to the state traffic commission, we have to go to the Department of Transportation. There's nothing approved yet, there's nothing submitted yet, but we have to start someplace. Thirdly, and I think whoever started before was addressing this in a way, we're asking to enter into a contract today for physical delivery in October of 2016. That means as developers, and we are developers, take risk. That's a large risk. Think if you were asked to sell your house today to close 18 months from now without knowing that the purchaser would know what the interest rates were, or could get a mortgage, or could sell their home. To get to that point, we will spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in planning, design, and in collaboration with the town planning staff and the planning and zoning commission. That's risk, that's what developers do. But please keep in mind, we cannot physically start on this site until October 2016, assuming the high schools on time. There's about 18 months of construction to do. So we're talking about delivering this sometime in 2019 if we're really lucky, and probably in 2020. So when you start looking at what we're being sold the property for in terms of money, it's not to pay as dollars, it's the risk involved. I wanna add just a couple, can you still handle anything? I look at my regulations, and in quite likely this plan, one week, the plan's here, you're welcome to look at them at your leisure, and I do apologize, I just found out we were changing the doordrums, if I would've got my PowerPoint so we could project it, so people could see it better. There's a great deal of open space, it's based on a village concept. What that means is, and if you look at the boards over on the right side, first, great deal of first floor retail with residential above it, not dissimilar to many of the villages like Clinton, and Chester, and Essex, that we now all live around. There'll be a great deal of public access, there's a river, we will build river rocks, there'll be ways for people to get to and from the river. There's a public library. Under our plan, our intention is to shut down the second signal that exists now at the library, just to a flashing crosswalk. So we'll be reducing the number of signals on 81. There'll be the one that you get coming off the highway and the one that goes across the street to the Clinton Commons. The whole idea of this is that it is sustainable, walkable, bike, you can use your bike, and get around in a village setting. One of the key components that the town came back to us was that there was a great deal of demand for hotel. So we've gone out and gotten a commitment from a hotel, which shows up on the site plan, you can see that, it's right on, it's the building against 81. I have to switch hands, excuse me. In terms of uses, because people have been asking me that, there'll be a variety of small retail, specialty retail, restaurants, gathering places, and residential. Right now, for Clinton Commons, for those customers, there's not a lot of places to eat. So we want to create eating places that will serve us both the town and those customers. But what we're also looking to do is to create an atmosphere that attracts people who live in town, in the area, and not just those coming off of 95. It's a mixture. That's why it's a mixed-use development. Hotel, residential, there'll probably be some small medical offices in there, retail, etc. None of the buildings of your notice are large. I know that Target looked at the site, someone said the state lot is odd sized, forgetting whether the town wanted it or not, they couldn't fit. Large commercial retail boxes simply won't fit. It's just because of the configuration of the wetlands. If you notice on the top of it, the big green area, which we're supposed to know as the playing fields, as we all know, you have to use subsurface set to contain. In order to do that, you have to install a very specialized DEEP-approved system. That's what that space is for, it'll be open green space, a drawing envision, usable as walking, passive area, things like that. If you look at, there's sort of a round area in the middle, if you were looking at a streetscape that's right opposite the library crosswalk, so that you'll have the river view shooting back. Now, most of you will be driving by, I assume, you won't be walking up 81. And think about when you're driving at approximately 25, 30, 35 miles an hour, what do you really see? But one of the ideas when you do new urbanism design is that you create view corners, so that people actually slow down and look, and get invited in. Will this be the final planning configuration? I doubt it, but it will be very close to it. Once this, hopefully gets approved here, we'll start the actual planning process, which will be in collaboration again with the planning staff, the planning and zoning commission, the tenants, the users, balancing everybody's needs. Our hope is to actually submit for approval sometime in September of 2015, starting again with inland wetlands. We assume it will take us six to nine months to get through the entitlement process. We then have to get through STC and DOT, and if any of you have ever dealt with those incentives for approvals, those take the longest. So we're hoping by the time you're ready to physically deliver the property, we'll actually be through the entitlement process. That's how long it takes. So I know many of you are thinking 2,800,000 sounds like too low of a number, but if you add all the risk, and someone also mentioned, we're taking the risk on remediation, and there's a great deal to remediate, and we're taking the risk on raising the building. Not the town. If it ends up costing $4,000,000, that's our headache, not the town's. So I'll hand the mic over to who is next.
So I hope this is gonna work for me, I think it is. What I'd like to do now is invite anyone up who would like to make a comment. I know there's just a lot of people here, and I'm sure there's a lot of people who wanna come up and speak on the issue, so what I'd like to do is, if you could try to hold your comments for about two minutes, I've got somebody over here with a timer, and also just try not to be repetitive, you know, if you hear people are saying the same things over and over again, just keep that in mind when you come up. And just one last thing, if you could just be respectful of what folks are saying up here, whatever one comes up to say means something to them, so if we could just be respectful of that, I would appreciate it. Anyone who wants to come up, just state your name and your address, and I'll hand you the mic up.
This is Amino 26 Old Mill Road. Mr. Rensselaer, thank you very much for that presentation, we appreciate everything that you said, but there's several questions. First of all, I'd like to say that from the very beginning of this process, I served on the planning committee, and it was actually my idea to, once this target notion was put to rest, that we put out an RFP and RFQ type of format. And I wanted to say that this property has never, never been marketed with the current regulations in place. The regulations were only recently changed, and under the current... The regulations were only recently changed, and under the current regulations, and these are facts that everyone should be aware of, but no one is telling you, up to 50% of this property could be made residential without age restrictions. They've also increased the height that these buildings can ultimately be built to, so that in fact, you could have multiple levels of residential small units. And all of these units could potentially have schoolchildren that will be put into our system at a cost of approximately $15,000 per student. If you can envision, for example, 100 students going into the system, your education increases alone will be one and a half million dollars, and they're talking about you should be very happy that you're getting 300 to 400,000 in taxes. I've also heard it said, I believe by the first selection, that all the property is worth more when we build residential. That's nonsense, of course. You don't have the additional educational expenses and the educational portion of your budget. Every year, every year, the educational portion of your budget is the largest portion of your taxes. So start increasing that. Excuse me? Excuse me, this is a town meeting, and I, the one that spent a lot of time attending these meetings. No, 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 excuse me. Well, there are a lot more questions and a lot more things to be said. I don't know where in the charter it says... Okay, let's see how many people.
Does anyone else want to go up and talk?
Sandy Hook, 17, we analyze. I was a megawatt, I'll be honest. I'll be honest. I was like, are you kidding me, 2.8 million dollars? And then it's going to cost us what? It's going to cost them two, over $2 million to clear this? And I'm like, I gotta figure out these numbers. And lo and behold, there's a school in Newtown that was just demolished, Sandy Hook, 69,000 square feet, built in 1956. It was 1.4 million dollars to abate the school, and 850 million, I mean, excuse me, 850,000 to demolish the school. 2.2 million dollars for 69,000 square feet. I believe Morgan is 117,000 square feet. So with those numbers, alright, I'm like, okay, maybe I ought to chill out a little bit. But I was still like, God, 2.8 million dollars doesn't seem like a whole lot. So thanks to Clinton RSVP, I got ahold of the developer's proposal that he submitted to the committee, and he listed on it, listed on it the people he was going to have that was a part of his development team. And he listed his architect. So I went on the architect's website, and I was like, huh! Those renderings of the store center look very similar to the renderings that he submitted with his proposal. So I go onto the store center in Mansfield website, and it's really nice, and I was like, hmm! Because also in the background, I did some research on the developer, and I was like, some of his projects are really good, some of his projects, I can't, I'm like, no, please don't do that in Clinton. But I have full confidence now, after seeing the architect's designs, and I encourage you to, at the very least, look at the store center, because, and I spoke to him very briefly that, his vision isn't completely like the store center, because it's too high, too minced, I'm not too minced. So I have faith in this project, and I hope for us to be do.
Mr. Buckley?
Timothy Buckley, Faridale Road. I actually came tonight to learn a bit, I mean, I did what most people probably did in this room, which was read what you can in the newspaper, look on Facebook, a page, talk to friends, neighbors, etc. And I actually had a lot of questions tonight, even on the car ride over here, a little bit of a heated discussion of, I don't know exactly how I'm going to vote on the project tonight. But I like to say that I think that a good job was done on answering most of those questions, and I do feel very confident about the project. And I feel that a lot of the questions that people rose in letters to the editor and so forth, were, I was satisfied with the answers, and I'd like to thank everyone for their hard work.
I'm not really sure who can answer this question. I think the proposal is terrific, and I don't know of anybody in town who would object to how this would look in their town, based on what we are trying to do to improve it. My only question is, I know this is the concept of what is proposed, but is there a safeguard in the sale and purchase agreement, or in any of the paperwork, that if in a year and a half during this process, the developer comes back to us and says, you know, but we really tried with this, but it's not working, so we're going to have to not do this and do something else like, and this is not to raise a ruckus, but storage facilities, or something else of that nature, that would not be what we all hope in concept it's going to be. So I don't know who can answer that. Willie's running, so he's either running to answer or running off.
The only safeguards in the contract are, if the remediation cost, Henry, 300, above and beyond what we had anticipated, exceed 300, above and beyond what we anticipated with demolition, he has an opt-out. We also have an opt-out if, in fact, when we get to the end of the line, the regulations that have been approved, his application that goes forward. Now, he's going to, he's going to give us a, let me get away from the speakers, the $50,000 deposit upon the benchmarks, which is, this is one of them, town meeting, and /or ends up a referendum, which it could, approval of the sale. The last one, two, excuse me, are the hotel regulations, that the zoning board is working on now to get those approved. And then the Board of Ed, which I know Jack's working on with their counsel regarding the turning the property over to the town at the time the property is vacated. When those are all done, another 230,000 comes to the town, that part of the deposit is refundable. If we get to the end of the day, the application goes forward, and it's complying with the regs, and for some unvalid reason, because unfortunately with the regs, a lot of these things, the uses on that property are special exceptions, which gives the zoning board a lot of distraction. But I'm confident, because they worked on these regs together, and they worked with our planning consultant and our zoning people, and the developer to establish this, that it will be approved. But if it is not, and there's a lot of money outlay, that 230,000 is a refundable, and he can back out of that deal at that point. And then we'll be stuck with a piece of property. But there is, we still have 50 grand, and he's out a lot of money, because he's already done a lot of site investigation, this is going to actually get to the point where he's going to put an application and come up with a site plan, come up with the engineer needed to potentially develop this site. But there is an opt-out based on 300 threshold above what we anticipated for the building's demolition, and the approval through the zoning board for the development, based on the concept, and I will say in the contract, which has been circulated, is very tight regarding the regulations. The concept is the concept, we know things that may have to be moved around based on the site conditions that they present themselves, and more investigation is going on, but the concept is basic. It limits the amount of residential on a percentage of square feet, up to 35%, with an incentive for certain things, if you dig into certain things, you can go up to 50%. And it limits, it limits the amount of overall coverage. We really try to keep, and the zoning board worked with us, our planning consultant, we really try to maximize the use of the site, create green spaces, and a village, community type of atmosphere. Again, as I said before, not a bump and run, where you get off the highway, go shopping, and you're leaving. This is something that's sustainable, because if people are actually living there, they're going to support the little businesses that are there. And then we also have some other stuff going on in town, which is going to support the other uses that are being proposed at this point. So that's where we are with the contract. I hope I answered you, Jen.
You said something about a referendum, could you explain the referendum?
Well, you may make a petition for one of you, so that's all I'm talking about.
Kurt Carr and I, and us become itself. First of all, I can say that I think this two-minute limit on people who are against this is extremely unfair. But, no, I'm sorry, that's not true. I think Mr. Resnickoff spoke for at least five minutes, Mr. Prince has spoken considerably longer. So I just want to say I object completely to you limiting Mr. Semino and myself to only two minutes. I want to get us out of here as much as you do, but I think there are important things that need to be said, and they can't all be said necessarily in two minutes. Point of order here, Mr. Chairman.
Somehow you have to stop the people from interjecting, but I ask that you respect the speaker's time, and you are interrupting, taking away what you want.
Anyway, the estimate that was made in 2010 was as-is for $5 million commercial, as-is for $3.8 million for residential. Mr. Prince has said that you get more revenue out of residential if, indeed, he was quoted properly by Stan Fisher, which is of course always questionable. But the fact of the matter is that this is a 32%, that the professional appraiser gave us a 32% premium for commercial. The other thing that Mr. Semino pointed out, and I would like to echo, is that residential usually pays about 70% of its cost in taxes. I don't know where we got this mixed use on this particular piece of property. There are 10,000 acres in Clinton. Your real estate grand list is 90% residential already. This is Clinton's birthright, this particular piece of property, as commercial real estate. And if you put residential on it, particularly small apartments, it is going to likely cost you considerably more than it's going to generate in taxes. So I hope tonight that you've come here to listen to both sides, and even though those who are against it tonight are going to be shut off in two minutes, that you will consider the other side and vote no. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak?
Thanks, Simon Bobo-Krill. It's two minutes. I came here, I gave a vote no, and some very good presentations, why we should vote yes. All of them took a lot of time. Therefore, I give the rest of my two minutes back to Mr. Semino, so he can finish his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Okay, I'm going to try to talk as fast as I can with these time limits. I went to the Board of Finance meeting where this was brought before them, and I want to tell you that I don't think anyone in the room was there, so let me please tell you that the chairman of the Board of Finance told the people in the room that there were only 10 usable acres, and she's a real estate agent, so therefore she's coming up with a per-acre value of $280,000. The fact is, there are 25 usable acres here, and regardless of if this developer only wants to use 15 of it, there's 25 usable acres, and this property should be put out into the market to wall the developers with the new current regulations. Also, I just want to say that, as Mr. Carr said, that appraisal, the last appraisal that was done on this property, said that as commercial property, as-is, with this building on it, the market value is $5 million. You see projects that are going on in Old Sabre now, in Guilford, in Branford, because the market is heating up. Nothing is going to be done here till 2016. We have plenty of time to now, with the new regulations, put this back on the market and get closer to market value for this property. Everyone in this room wants to see this property sold, but doesn't everyone in this room want to see this property sold for as much as we can get for it, and with a plan that does not provide more taxes, and instead just give us something in the center of town that could eventually, you know how these things over time develop, it could lower the values of properties in Clinton. So I really hope that you think about this. We, remember the drawings we got for the new school? Remember the building that we were promised? It means nothing. This isn't word paper, it's printed on, frankly.
I'm sorry, yes, my name is John Musany, with all respect to everyone's opinion, I guess that if the town can afford it, to keep at least for one or two years, hopefully they get that despite. Thank you.
Pam Freds from Old Road. I just want to remind everyone that 90%, 90% of the monies for taxes in this town come from residential. We are higher than any of the other towns, it's not true in the other towns. We need to look at this prime commercial property, which it was presented to us at the time that we voted to put in the new school, that the sale of this property would be for prime commercial, not residential. So therefore, don't complain about your taxes, be aware of the fact that how great your taxes are going to be going up this year. They are going, you're going to choke when you see them. So we need to hold on to this property and use it for prime commercial development to help abate from the taxpayer. I'd like to make a close for you, something that was in the Harbor News. In the Harbor News article that came out about this site, it mentioned that our first license said that residential property generate more tax revenues. But it's the quote that he had after that that I would like to remind you of, and that is, he says, "tax revenues," and he is referring to residential, which he mentioned in the previous paragraph. Tax revenues is the gift that keeps on giving, year after year. Yes, you are doing everything you can in this town to milk the residential taxpayers, year after year. Let's stop this. Let's take a breath. We can sell this for prime commercial property. We do not have to sell it to the low bidder at this time. Please consider this.
John Olson, 101 Pratt Road. I rise to support resolution of the sale of the property. What I'd like to point out is, is I'm in construction, and most developers are coming in asking for five-year tax abatements, 10-year tax abatements. So when you look at appraisals and sales of properties, some of those properties are sold for a certain price, but then they're coming back and looking for all these abatements. So one, I think you have to look at that. Two, if you're looking at a half a million dollars in 2020, we could wait a couple more years, that's a million dollars in a couple of years, another million dollars a couple of years after that, and probably be a lot more. But let me say this one final thing. I came and moved to this community, I pay my taxes, my kids weren't here, weren't educated there, but I tell you what, I welcome children, I welcome people, and thank God 50 years ago when people didn't want to have any people around because none of them were sitting in this building today.
I'm kind of black skin, I just have some...
Oh, I'm just...
I don't need that. I think, without...
Sorry, I don't need that.
Sorry, I don't need that.
Steve Briscoe, 98 Longville Road. I'm not going to argue either for or against tonight. What I'd like to say is, I think this is something that is far too important to be decided at a meeting like this. I think it really does need to go to a referendum.
Anybody else?
Call a question?
Call a question? Okay, so...
Motion to call a question?
Is there a motion to call a question? Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye!
Opposed?
No.
Okay.
Motion to have a paper ballot?
Thank you. Second?
Aye.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye!
Opposed? Okay, so you all have your paper ballots. If you could check out yes or no. If everyone could just sit and let it go with that for a second.
Do you explain what yes means, what no means?
Could you explain what yes and no means, please?
Yes is in favor of the resolution. Yes is in favor. No? Any votes in favor of the meeting?
No.
Second? All in favor?